How are you Pastor? Great, Eddie, how are you? Good.
Okay, we are recording.
Yeah huh?
It's recording.
So far, our work for she stops them.
Yeah, it's on recording. Oh, somebody's in the waiting room. I didn't let everybody in, admit all.
Too much.
Thank you. Um, hi, everyone who's in the waiting room, can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you, Brian. Okay, so it says, uh, just make sure it says we're recording though. Yeah, we're recording.
Yes, it's recording.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. Tonight is the regular monthly meeting of the Clinton and Land Wetlands Commission. Tuesday, September 2nd, time is seven oh six P M. Cherry, you might call him over tonight.
Lawrence Edgar. Edward Almarino.
Present.
Michael Florio. Thomas Welch. Robert Corson.
Here.
Christopher Hornbeck.
You're.
Scott Harley.
Here.
Mark Berno.
Here.
Amy Handler.
Here.
Douglas Elway.
Here.
Yeah, so can we see Mark for Michael Florio? Amy for Thomas Welch. So for area outlets. You guys are all promoted up voting numbers tonight, right? All right, first on the agenda, we need to just review and approve the minutes from the regular monthly meeting from August 5th, twenty twenty five. So move.
Who's that?
Chris, go ahead, a second. Yeah, I'll take it. Any discussion on the minutes from last month?
No.
Hey, all those who have been in favor or approved, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Motion carries.
I do want to say Kathy, thank you very much for that beautiful email that you sent out.
Yeah.
That's very nice. Thank you.
Yeah, on to item number three, receipt of application. So on the agenda tonight is I W C twenty five dash eight, this is killing worth turn twenty killing worth turnpike. Application for regulated activity within fifty feet of an inland wetlands. Application workplace of deteriorating pedestrian bridge at the Clinton Premium Outlets. With the new pedestrian bridge and culvert crossing. This is going to be a sister's map forty three, block twenty four, lot one, in the zone B dash one. Applicant is Brian Fleming and Max Osterdicks.
Pretty good.
When you get our, the talk, um, from Kimmelhorn Associates, owners, Simon Property Group. This is app new application, so for tonight, we're just doing administrative review. Um, give the application or applicant and, uh, the chance to familiarize ourselves with the project. Um, I don't, I know a couple of you were on the commission, they came in a little while ago, and let us know.
We went through everything, is this the same bridge that we went through everything?
It is.
It's a good.
So pedestrian bridge.
Yeah.
So.
And we did the sidewalk. Yeah.
Um, so tonight, what we'll do is we'll vote to receive the application and then we'll set a sidewalk.
Okay.
Uh, to view the property.
For those who haven't seen it.
Um, I guess a long time ago. Mister Lemon, do you have like a short presentation for tonight?
I can take the lead here and just give an overview if that would be helpful.
Sorry, we, we have a trouble here, we just gotta turn up the volume a bit.
Is that better?
Is this any better?
You're, you're still very quiet, but we'll be quiet, we'll be able to hear you.
Okay.
I have you on full, can you turn up your volume as well?
There would be a speaker.
Yeah.
I can try a headset.
Yeah, that, that'll work.
Is this any better?
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Okay. Um, if I share my screen, can you guys see that, is that?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Okay. Most of you are somewhat familiar with this, um, project site, but.
We can see it, Max.
Okay, thanks, this is Clinton Premium Outlets, there are two shopping areas here in the north and the south. And the bridge in question is this pedestrian bridge right here. Kimmelhorn is working with Simon Properties to, um, figure out what is the ideal solution to replace this bridge. We've done, um, structural studies over the past couple of years to evaluate the condition of the bridge. Those studies have shown, um, that it is nearing the end of its lifespan and in need of either rehabilitation or replacement. And, um, we've evaluated a few different options, um, either rehab. Or replace in kind with the bridge or replace with a culvert. Um, we've looked at the various environmental impacts to those different options, the, the costs, the long-term maintenance of those. Uh, different types of structures and have come to the conclusion, um, that the least impactful alternative and most beneficial for the property. In terms of visual openness, allowing sort of connectivity between the two sides of the site. The ability to incorporate different plantings and, and benches and things like that would be a culvert. Um, I could pull up the plan here. So we're proposing a culvert crossing with fill over top of it. The culvert spans basically as much of the wetland below it as possible to minimize impacts. And then, um, we're proposing native plantings on top of the structure. To sort of allow this to blend in, to provide additional habitat for wildlife species and just generally, um, improve the aesthetics of the area, so. There's obviously more plans in the plan set, but, um, that's the basic overview, I don't know if you, I could pause for questions if that would be helpful.
Any questions from commission? Just initial.
Is this, is this gonna be what was presented to us a few, so, so years ago?
I think it was last year, we, we presented some of the alternatives that we were considering. I don't, and we didn't submit a formal application, so I'm not, I mean, I wasn't present for a sidewalk, I don't know. If this is the same thing you're thinking of or not.
I think there have been some changes that we had our meeting. That we talked about too, so, yeah, it's not exactly the same.
Yeah. The long span culvert is the general concept that we left the meeting with as this was the ideal. Approach that the site would like to have, so yes, it is a structure that we had spoken of about a year ago.
And we. Corrugated, is it corrugated steel or is it, uh, reinforced concrete culvert?
Yeah, we are proposing a corrugated metal pipe, correct? And then at the end of this document, we've included a couple photos of what we are aiming for, for material types. And configuration. To help.
I think it said, open bottom?
Yes, correct, open bottom, we have riprap along the, uh, as close as we can to the foundation, we'll call it, uh, for scour protection. But we again are trying to minimize the impacts to the wetland. So we tried to maximize the span, we tried to minimize the impacts to the wetland down below, so we're trying to. Have a wire faced M S E wall look with a rock veneer, rock in the baskets, that is also at the site. So again, trying to bring in a natural look. So what's, what we're showing in that bottom right is very similar to what we are aiming for as a project.
The plantings will be on, on top of that.
Correct, up on the, yep, up on the slopes.
Oh, I see, sloping down for the retaining wall.
Yep, and then we'll have a, a fence for fall protection, uh, that is right along the backside of those headwalls. And then we are proposing a fence along the trail to prevent people, to discourage people from going down to the slopes and then down into this ravine. So two different types of barrier protection, we'll call it, for pedestrians.
Well, any of the plants, plantings on that, or an area where that, any, then be vexations so that people don't, uh, wanna call, you know, get in between the fences?
Correct, right now, the landscape plan is showing various types of vegetation, from heavy vegetation to native vegetation, trees. Um, and an attempt to really discourage people, the slopes are about a three to one, so we kept them fairly shallow. Uh, we don't want to make it a treasure treacherous slope, but we also don't want to go too flat and then really impact more, so we've kind of refined. The impacts, what we showed you a year ago, we actually shortened up the culvert, um, as tight as we could. We have it kind of pushed to the south, and again, just trying to minimize impacts. To the wetland.
Any other?
What, can I ask, Scott, what, what is the distance between the two fences? The width?
Or the closest you're gonna be is right above the crown of the pipe, I don't, I can measure it here, give me a, a second and.
Twenty feet, maybe? You measuring, Brian?
Yeah, I'm working on it, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
Good question, I wasn't prepared for that question.
I was trying to find the.
Get it to love the client.
Roughly about eighteen feet to the back of the wall, so between, between railings. We have a fairly, like a three foot level, almost a level area right behind the top railing, before it hits the three to one slope down to the lower headwall. So, within that eighteen feet, that's the general concept.
Because I think, uh, part of the problem that I saw when we were there. On the sidewalk before was the people. Some people tend to throw debris. Into that area, I just wondered, um, what the distance was and.
Sure.
All that could be, uh, discouraged as well.
Eighteen across, and the block weighs three feet, about seven and a half on each side. Eighteen across. Yeah, three feet, well, we passed, three foot, we passed. Two targets, seven to seven and a half on each side.
Or less chance of people throwing trash.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah. So.
I think there's also something, maybe that, you know, you see a bridge, people want to throw trash over the edge, watch it fall down, this, you know, using a different design here. Maybe it's less attractive to just toss your, toss your garbage down the slope.
Okay. Can you tell us, do you have like a plan that shows how much of the wetlands will actually be filled with this plan?
Yes, let me find that. Um, so there's a few different stages of construction here, um. I think this is the first, so this is the demo phase, um, the wetland lines are drawn in yellow too, let's make this red or orange. The wetland lines are here, in our, in orange. Um, so, so this, this impact here is temporary, we would propose construction matting to allow vehicles to come down here. Um, and remove the existing bridge, and then there'd be some, um, some impacts here where the existing substructure is to remove the bridge. The next. Um, phase, this is, um, construction phase, so we, so we still have, uh, temporary impacts from the construction matting. Um, and then we have fill here behind the, um, the footings. And we've sort of shifted it to one side to align with drainage patterns and, and try to minimize impacts. What do we have here, permanent impacts are zero point zero four acres, seventeen sixty five square feet.
What is construction matting, what does that consist of?
Uh, it would be like thick, uh, pieces of timber that are put in a sequence, um. That allows machinery to work, um, in a wetland without causing significant ruts or otherwise disturbing the wetlands and then, and then the, the matting is removed. And if any fine grading needs to be done to, you know, to sort of smooth out the wetland, it can be, but i- it prevents larger impacts to wetlands from construction grading. It's, it's used fairly frequently on, on utility lines where you have, you know, transmission runaways that need to be traversed and need to go through wetlands.
Any other questions from commission? Okay, so we need a motion to accept the application and set a sidewalk. I'm going to suggest until we hit, um, daylight savings that we meet on Thursday. At six, dude, does that work for everybody, Thursday's Thursday?
It's Thursday.
Uh, so it would be next Thursday, so Kathy is out on the eighteenth, so.
The eleventh is good.
I'm proposing the eleventh at six o'clock with a rain date of the twenty fifth at six.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, I will be your next Thursday, I'll be on time.
Okay, um, so if you can't make the site off, you can just coordinate with Kathy.
Yeah.
She, she, she goes.
Yeah, or you can go to the outlets on your own, and go shopping and walk along the ridge.
I've got, I've got the, I've got the presentation, the original presentation, so I've got.
There. If you wanted to, if you haven't seen it. We can, we can assume.
I was, I was at the original, I'm not remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so I'll need a motion to approve, or motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept application I W C twenty five dash.
And set a sidewalk, so.
Sidewalk for, uh.
The eleventh at six P M?
Eleven sixty five.
With a rain date of the twenty fifth at the same time, six P M.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, do we also need the motion to send this to our engineer for review? So I'd like to have this one sent to our town engineer for review, it's a bigger project.
I certainly think I want appropriate.
That's a separate motion.
Okay, so, and you made a motion, the second motion. Hey, any discussion? And all those voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, so, well, we set a sidewalk for the eleventh at six P M. With a rain date of the twenty fifth at the exact same time. Um, for sidewalks, um, it would be great if we could have some kind of stakeout. So, you know, not exact, but rough estimate of where the limits of, uh, wetland impacts would be, just so we could visually see it. Um, but then we will bring our own plans, so that's really all that we'll need.
Do you anticipate getting down the slope into the wetlands?
Probably not, if we can view everything from the bridge, we could probably do the sidewalk from the bridge.
Okay. All right, sounds good, we can have that flag, flag.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Hey, um, on to item number few four, administrative review, this is. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, General House, please, I need to appoint a secretary, Bob can be the secretary for saving, he might be doing anything. Item number four, request to release the bond, this is request for a release of, uh, bond in the amount of five thousand six hundred ninety two dollars. This was for I W C eighteen dash zero one one R thirty two Cream Pot Road. In Kathy's W E O report. She gave a summary, it appears that, uh, applicant completed all work, established their property, so.
She sent some nice pictures, Kath.
So with that, I'll take a motion to release the bond.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, release. The bond. By I W C dash eighteen dash zero eleven R. And, um.
I put a draft motion together if you want me to.
Yeah, you, you, you wrote it up?
Yeah.
Could read that.
Yeah. Move to approve the inland wetlands bond release, five thousand six hundred eighty dollars for I W C dash eighteen dash zero eleven. R for thirty two cream pot road. Map forty, block thirty nine, lot eighty two, zone R eight, activity within fifty feet of it. New single family residents. Are pro. Appertant, pertinent structure. Is that right?
Yeah.
Close to my record. Approved by the I, the W C, um, twelve four, two thousand eighteen, per site plan, the title of the site plan. Of thirty two cream pot road prepared by Fettis Engineering LLC, eight, April twenty fifth, two thousand eighteen. She's went through after, Megan Cunningham, property owner Benjamin Foley, trustee, and has the walking dishes, but. Over who will have met and verified by wetlands, the force officer Kathy Silver.
Okay, so motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, seconds, any concession, Lisa Bond? Hey, all those voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Motion carries.
Appertant.
You heard it, took me a while to get to that, uh, item agenda number five, correspondence.
I don't have any correspondence.
One for this month. Um, old business, anyone have any old business? Hey, and your W E O report, Kathy.
Okay, so my biggest report is, or my report, is that this is Carrie's last meeting with us. Carrie had officially retired and she's now as our clerk and we married someone new, Melissa South, who started today. So I just want to thank Carrie for all of the time and the work and everything.
Thank you, you're, you're good.
I want to say.
No.
Thank you for everything you've done for us.
We're gonna miss you, Carrie.
I'm gonna miss you, guys, too.
You're helping us.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, you're helping me out.
It's funny, you know, sit there and think, whoa, it's Tuesday, I have a meeting, well, I did for the last Tuesday, but, um, yeah.
Would you like to join the board?
She doesn't want to go to the sidewalk, guys, come on.
I have a lot of personal stuff going on right now, so.
So Melissa.
Thank you very much, I mean that, you know that.
Yeah.
So Melissa's very excited, um, to start, she started today, it was her first day, and I, I had to almost stop her from coming because I said, you need to rest. I talked to you so much that my favorite words, I'm like, we need to take it away tonight, so she's very excited to come, so I think she'll enjoy working there. Bringing a lot of energy and, um.
Oh, is she?
Huh?
Oh, is she?
Yeah, she, I think she's gonna be a great addition to our staff, so I think she'll enjoy working there, she'll be here next month.
Absolutely. Be our granddaughter. She can be my granddaughter.
So, anyway. Um, also, I just want to let you know, we have two wetlands in Forsen Moss, so we, uh, you know, uh, applications. One, um, was for, it's, hasn't been assigned a number yet. House, um, and they moved it, um, and they re-adjusted it, so it's, um, less than a hundred feet and it's, um, more than fifty. So it fell into the W E O category, and the other was for thirteen, Kelsey Town Bridge, and that's for a shed. Both of them, I requested they have done the vision of the wetland, so we know, so I know exactly where they were out of the. Um, so, uh, other than that, and the staff change, um, we talked about, um, under new business, we have a discussion of inland wetland bonding. Abby, our town planner, met with Scott and they were gonna discuss that tonight, but Abby said she's planning to come to the meeting next month, I think probably with the bridge. So, um, she said, maybe she'll move that discussion to next month, um, so there's not gonna be anything bound to it. And, um, the other thing is just the, um, the training, I know I heard from, it's a part about getting on. It's a little tricky, if you have trouble, let me know, but there is about contacts in the board too deep. Um, and as I, I said, just to let you guys know, even though the, the mandated training gives you a year, the module gives you sixty plus. So I just completed it, I think it's, um, it's great training, glad it's self-paced because it's very technical, but I think it's gonna, it's really a great. So, and it's nice, there's a quiz after each section, so you can kind of make sure you've, you know, gotten the knowledge, and then if you don't pass, you don't move to the next module. They can, they quiz, you have to get an eighty or above to pass.
There's like, when you sign in, there's like three ways to sign in.
There is, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I was going, kind of going around circles, because you have to write an email, like, but you said to reach out to somebody.
Yeah, there is, and, and also, once you, this is important too, because I almost messed this up, when you take it, if you pause and you want to go back to it, you can, um. Click the button, so you can take back where you left off, and you don't have to start from the beginning again. Because I made that mistake on the first module, and I had to repeat it, so, so you want to make sure that you go back to where you exited from, but. As I said, I think you'll, I'm gonna give you some of your time.
So there are no special passwords or anything, right?
Um, so when you go into the system, it'll kind of guide you through how to register, and there is no fee, so it'll ask you to register and pay the fee, but it's zero.
I didn't, I didn't see that registration.
Yeah, so you, you should, like I said, there, that, that number or the, the email through the contact, because.
Yeah.
It's, it may be an issue on there, I have the technical piece, because you don't have anything to do with that, unfortunately, I can't help with that, but. Once you get in, you get into the pending class and, um, then everything will be available there. So, but if you have any questions, you know, the voice will be the front.
Appreciate it. So your new business, um, I don't know if you heard Kathy, but you probably know that there's a fire, I guess, this past weekend at.
Yeah, right, the.
I know, not very good, I heard.
You know, you know.
Unfortunately, I was there all day Saturday, so.
So.
I don't know, if a lot of you know, but we had history with that property in our commission, they had a violation, I think it was over COVID.
It was.
It was like.
Yeah, when I did the burn number.
Yeah.
More to do inspections.
They had filled in the wetlands and, um, came in front of us, it was a violation, had to come up with a remediation plan to. Um, and then, I, a lot of the commission was concerned about what's happened this past weekend happening there.
It happened, it came in at six thirty A M.
Friday.
Yep, and then it went, it went back out at one o'clock.
And it'll probably burn it for at least a week or two.
It went back out at one o'clock, then it went back at nine o'clock, then these guys were there for fifteen to sixteen.
Probably you have to turn the pile to put it out totally, and. They haven't processed anything the entire year, so it's just big mounds, so now they gotta spread it out.
Is it a wood chip, so what are them?
It's stumps.
Nobody had, had anything there for the year.
So, it, it was quite exhausting Saturday, because you gotta climb up on these stumps and these piles and as they're peeling away, we were opposed to. Putting it out, they're peeling piles away, which. You're never gonna get it totally out, it's gonna, it's gonna burn itself out eventually, but we gotta keep it contained at this point, so. Luckily, we kept it out today, because of nothing, big flares, but it's still burning in the middle of that pile.
That's right on the corner, right?
Yeah, seven.
It's really impossible. Pile, is, is the pile part of the thing that we were, we were.
Yeah, no, it was.
Initially, we're.
It used to jump fires, drive waves.
I don't, I don't.
So piles, um, there were no piles and they weren't the issue, it was just work they were doing within the proximity to the other wetlands, they tried to drop that. Um, in terms of the wetlands, and he's.
Yeah, I grew up in that neighborhood, that's, I'm in that hood, so I know that, every foot of that property.
Yeah.
All right. They, they worked on in the wet, so they just tried to extend it out, their area to work, they paid, I remember.
So I was gonna say, because of the event.
And it wasn't so.
Whenever it's safe to do so, or like, I should probably be there, because I'm sure they dumped lots of water.
Um, really?
So. So. So I'm fed in a lot of the E N S controls that they have.
Deep was out there and they continued to go out there along with the fire chief from Mike Neff, the synergy. Uh, they've been trying to say uh but deep was out there doing air quality, you know, water. Deep went out there and been been monitoring totally there with a monitor. So we have probably some reports to them too.
I'm the verdict official for this town and I I got calls from Circle Lane Laurel Street and two people on that property, that area have um asthmatic problems. So she can't open the windows anymore. So what happened, she called me, I said, of course I'll tell them, we're getting rid of your camera. So as I come down Route eighty-one, I seen the smoke on Route eighty-one and they're on turf. And I smelled, I rolled out of my window, but I didn't see on it. And I called it back. I said, Regina, I said, I don't think it's those people. Cause these people were, they weren't from.
Friday, they on the verge of shot my ninety-five down because of.
The smoke was so bad, so it's all, they thought they were burning plastic. I said, it's not plastic. So I said, I'll be right there and and um so I called in, I called in. We see Margaret for me. So the guy has a camera fixed on his pot. And I knocked on the door, I said, hi, how are you? Who complained? I said, no one complained. I said, I smelled, I didn't tell them, it's waiting. I said, so I'm just coming up, I'm trying to find the the cause. I knew it did cause it. It was a fire. So I went to Regina's house and Regina said, it's not those people, they haven't touched your fire yet. In fact, they wanna take it down because so many people called and it's because they kept using it in garbage pit. And that they they, you know, so I said, so I guess I said, don't worry, strike you out, that's that's one.
But I don't think you're ever gonna be able to walk totally around that property. So. Been well involved in it.
I'll check in with them and then what I'll do is in between meetings, I'll send you guys an email just to update you on Monday.
Skip, Skip Tucker called me, he says, hey, let me know if they need anything, or send it out there, anything.
The people of the pit, so fire department, they're very very uh.
But they did work with.
They're very uh appreciative and very helpful. They rented these big machines immediately. Uh, they had to get emergency wide load permits on the on Friday morning. Uh, it was great on a holiday weekend. It was tough, the chief solved them with that, but there, we're lucky that they just said, no, no, we're doing this, it's on our dime. Because if they didn't, if they if they said no, you're seeing right now, the town has to pay for that and then go after them to reimburse it. But the people running the pit took responsibility. They don't, they leased it. And rent the equipment, luckily, or that would have been on the town's mind, so, but they've been very uh they've been working with the fire department and deep doing everything and anything they suggest, so.
Yeah, so whenever it's safe to do so.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that their E N S controls match the plan and if they don't.
I'm saying the fire actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll I'll be back tomorrow.
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, I have agenda number nine, chairs comments. Some had any comments for this meeting? So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, you can, pastor. I move the way adjourn.
All right, any discussion? All those voting in favor say aye. Aye. All right, thank you, everybody. So the eleventh, six o'clock. The weather.